Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 24th River Falls Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Biersted?
Here.
Bjork?
Here.
Carroll? Downing?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Odine?
Here.
Okay, next I approve the minutes from the September 10th meeting.
I so move.
Second. Okay, first and second on the meeting minutes from September 10th, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we have approval of the bills with Mr. Bjork.
Mayor and council, I'd like to ask for the approval of bills of $1,731,441.47 to be approved.
Second.
First and second on the bills, is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to public comments. If there's anybody on this has anything to say, now would be the time. Come on up, everybody's got two minutes. Fill out the form with your name, address, and phone number. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Patricia LaRue, and charter member of B City River Falls. In the late 1980s, Ryan De Sanctus was a healthy little boy, the second son of Pete and Sue De Sanctus. Ryan became ill. His mom took him to the family doctor three times, and three times she was sent home. The fourth time, Sue took Ryan to the emergency room. Dr. Westy diagnosed Ryan with spinal meningitis. Ryan was immediately taken to the Twin Cities where he was hospitalized for weeks. Sue De Sanctus and Pete are not rich, and by this time had a third son. But they would come home from visiting Ryan at the hospital and find $5 or $10 in their mailbox for gas. St. Bridget's parishioners brought them food, and neighbors watched the other two boys. Ryan ended up with permanent mental and physical challenges. The De Sanctuses were successful in litigation against the professional negligence. With that, Pete and Sue wanted to give back to the neighbors, the church, and the community that had been so kind to them. Just on the other side of the De Sanctus backyard was 28 acres of cropland. The De Sanctuses purchased the land, 20 acres was transacted with the city to become a park. Due to Ryan's disabilities, it was agreed that the newly formed De Sanctus Park would not be a place for competitive sports, but instead be a place for walking trails, prairie grasses, a playground, and kite flying. Pete is a member of the Air National Guard. In the summer of 1999, the Guard Civil Engineer Squadron volunteered to do some work on the park. The troops created a pond with ducks and geese and turtles. With the dirt removed, they then created a sledding hill. Again, the neighbors stepped up and provided picnic tables, coolers, and food for the troops as they worked on the park. In 2004, the Old Glover Schoolhouse was moved to De Sanctus Park. And although there is much grumbling about the cost of the schoolhouse, it found its perfect home. Given the history, the purpose, and in honor of a little guy who loved butterflies, I support the Ryan De Sanctus Park being set aside as a B City Park.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks. Okay, we'll close the public comments. Oops, go ahead.
Good evening. Dana Lynn Scott. I don't really enjoy appearing before this council to speak for my allotted two minutes. I doubt anyone does. Yet, community members show up regularly to ask the members of this council to bring a to address a problem, or to bring something to your attention that you may not be aware of. Often, they ask for greater transparency in government. But all too often, those community members' requests are ignored after their two minutes are up. In some cases, council members are openly dismissive of these concerns without actually looking into them to see if they are valid or not. I've spoken to many of those who've used their two minutes to express their concerns, and have rarely heard of any council member reaching out to them afterwards. Surely, these two minutes that regular citizens have to communicate with you are more than just an onerous duty you must endure. If so, you may as well just dispense with this bit of public input, along with transparency and sustainability. If those are just for show, why bother? More than one council member has claimed that I have no credibility despite my repeated offers to provide solid proof of the claims I have made during my allotted two minutes. But certainly, you would believe city staff if they contacted you with similar claims. There are several staff members who are willing to do that if provided immunity from retaliation for doing so. Are you willing to provide that immunity?
Is there anybody else?
Good evening. Lance Hubland, 310 West Charlotte Street. I am also in favor of the resolution designating De Sanctus Park as an official B City Park of River Falls. According to the USDA, three-fourths of the world's flowering plants and 35% of the world's food crops depend on animal pollinators. That means one out of three bites you eat depend on pollinators. And given that we are living in an ag-heavy environment or region, as well as having an ag-heavy university, it's really important that we support pollinators. So, in order to do that, we need to it requires land and it requires education. And so, designating the park will help do that and help show to the young people in our region that that pollinators are really important for our local economy as well. Because if pollinators go down in our region, ag production goes down, which means that our farmers don't make as much money. So, again, support the resolution to make De Sanctus Park an official B City Park. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tanya Schmidt, 622 West Elm Street. I am also in support of making De Sanctus our B City Park. Pollinators are so important. I want to echo some things that Lance said. I'm also, I think as many of you know, on the Board of Grow to Share, and we need places that are designated for those pollinators. We need them for the aesthetics and the beauty of being a part of this community. We need them for education, for all of us to understand ecosystems and where our food comes from. And it's also a wonderful location because of the FFA egg pot being right there. And I'm just in support of any number of things that promote more sustainability for humanity and the earth to be together in harmony. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Motes, 403 East Division Street. And I would like to talk about the picketing ordinance. Newtown is a very small town in Connecticut. It's a beautiful little place. And absolutely nobody in that town thought that a young man would come into the elementary school at Sandy Hook and murder 26-year-olds. No one imagined that, but it happened. On January 6th, 2021, there was an attack on the national Capitol. And few people imagined that that would happen either, including some of the people who were actually involved. But what happened here was what we could call a typical mob mentality. So, once things started, then it was really hard to stop it, and more people engaged in that activity than they had really wanted to at the beginning. We were in River Falls, we would like to think that all of these things wouldn't happen, but we don't know. We can't imagine that there would even be a shooting in our in our schools. But our schools are highly protected with double entryways in the schools. Things like this can happen to River Falls. And at the moment, I feel like there's a lot of tension in River Falls over the election. And if people don't like the results, I'm really concerned about mob mentality taking over. So, I would really like to urge you to pass this ordinance restricting picketing in residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will, just so everybody knows, we will be having an open session where the community can talk about this ordinance in a couple of minutes, if they want to wait till then, or they can come up and talk now.
Good evening. I'm William Hanson from the Town of River Falls. My brother-in-law, Ken, lives in Breezy Point area north of Duluth. A few years ago, due to storm damage, they were without electric service for nearly two weeks. He carried on through this time with a small emergency generator. His advice, which I share with you tonight, is that having some emergency electric power is vastly better than having none. Our Junction Falls Hydro is the source of electricity, which is here 24/7. And this source of 1.2 million kilowatt-hours of electricity is completely independent of our vulnerable electric power grid. Please work to retain and improve our Junction Falls Hydro as a valuable part of our River Falls emergency electric power supply. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else have anything right now? Okay, we'll go to a public hearing, so I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2024-05. This is an ordinance creating Section 9.24.070 for residential picketing regulations. Is there anybody on this who has anything to say about this? Come on up. Yes, this will also be two minutes, too.
Good evening. Earlier this year, an ordinance very similar to the one proposed today was voted down by the council. Yet, for some reason, Elder Person Morissette chose to dredge it up, slightly change it, try to get it passed again. The arguments against this ordinance have been presented. It's unneeded as there already exists laws which provide protection from harassment in one's own home. It's toothless, as it would only result in receiving a small fine and citation. It infringes on the constitutionally protected activity of free speech. And no incident of targeted picketing has ever occurred in River Falls. But as proponents say, it's better to be proactive in case it ever does. For Pete's sake, instead of wasting time on this non-problem, how about being proactive about a serious problem that does exist in River Falls? Lack of low-income housing for elderly residents. Two studies warned you of this problem many years ago, and staff explained in detail how it's now past the time it can be dealt with proactively.
This is about the picketing ordinance? If you want to talk about the picketing ordinance, that's fine. Anything else doesn't matter, right now. We're talking about the picketing ordinance.
You appear to be unconcerned about the housing of hundreds, the unhousing of hundreds of senior citizens in River Falls, while wasting time discussing this ordinance in three meetings.
Okay, who else? Anybody else have anything? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak here in this moment. I am here to support, actually, the proposed ordinance that's here. I've had an opportunity to speak with just a couple of you for just a brief moment regarding this. And I know that this was dredged up earlier in the year, you know, and talked about, and now here we are again, but I'm glad you did that. You know, at first, I didn't necessarily think I was going to support something like this because it was just for elected officials only. I've had a chance to think about that, and now it's brought back up again, but it includes everybody, including even someone like myself. I appreciate that and the change in the proposed ordinance for the simple reason that I too was an elected official some 20 years ago. But society, unfortunately, has changed over the last 20 years. And I tip my hat to each and every one of you that sits up there and has the willingness to serve the community members and do what you do. Because society has now gotten to the point with the advent of social media, people aren't nice anymore. They are simply nasty because of a difference of opinion in politics, or how to raise a kid, or what you think about law enforcement or elected officials. People don't care. I received hate mail and threats simply because I had a difference of opinion in how I raised a child some 30 years ago. So, for you to come forward with this now, it's greatly appreciated, and I definitely think it's worthy of what you're proposing for that simple reason of how society has changed. You know, Ms. Most has was up here and talked about things like January 6th, or even the Sandy Hook school shootings, how nobody would have ever thought at Sandy Hook that that tragedy would have happened, yet it did. Things like that can happen here in too, in Little River Falls, less than 20,000 people. You know, we could have a shooting, you know, we could have a riot of some sort, and what would Chief Young do then? You know, so, thank you for bringing this forward and dredging it up, Mr. Morissette, because it's needed, and it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Lenny Austin, and I've lived in the city of River Falls for about 20 years now. And up until recently, I also had the honor and privilege of serving as a police officer for 35 years, 29 of which I served in a suburb of the city of Minneapolis. And I'm here to talk briefly about the targeted picketing ordinance that council will be voting on tonight. Your city staff, to include the police chief, have recommended to the council that they take action and vote yes and pass this ordinance. And I also agree with this recommendation. These last several years, we have seen significant challenges in government. And unfortunately, rules of civility are not what they once were. There have been instances where public officials, as well as citizens, who, because of their given occupation, or because of something that involved them personally as part of their occupation, have been targeted by protesters in their own neighborhoods. Not at their places of employment, but at their own homes. This has caused significant disruption to their families, lives, as well as all of their neighbors. Now, all of you have volunteered for this job and understand with your job as elected leaders of the community that scrutiny is part of that job. And I too understood it all too well, and I was willing to accept that. What I simply cannot accept is that there have been instances where this scrutiny is coming into the neighborhoods. It disrupts their families and neighbors and all the people who are subject, to include the people that are subject to this scrutiny. Neighbors, friends, and family members did not sign up for that, and it is simply not right. At the last council meeting, some of you mentioned that these situations are rare. And I would agree, and I would agree with that to a point. They are rare, but like many things, this also has changed. These events are unfortunately becoming more commonplace than they were when I first started my career many years ago. And that is why this ordinance is before you. So, I just want to share this. I trust in the police chief and the police department, as well as all of you elected officials, if for some reason that this situation arises where this ordinance, once in place, were needed, that you would make the right decision. So, I appreciate the fact that, and I hope that you support this and vote yes for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve ordinance Section 9.24.070, residential picketing regulations.
Second.
First and second. Questions, comments? Yeah.
I'd like an opportunity to talk about responsible local government and what it looks like. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out to people who are here today that this is not the same resolution as it was back. And those little details are actually very big details. As I voted against the original one, I'd like to point out that I said I would get more details at the end of our last meeting regarding this resolution, so I did. I reviewed this with our city attorney and police chief. I also went over this with the Nonpartisan Municipal League of Wisconsin's legal attorney, Nick Zambos, and the league director, Jerry Duchene. To be clear, the Municipal League of Wisconsin is not advocating one way or another on this. The league functions in the capacity to say what is the legality of this. Nick Zambos, one of the league's municipal attorneys, advised after reviewing this with me that this ordinance was constitutional. From what I can tell, the American Civil Liberties Union of Wisconsin on their website does not address targeted picketing directly on their website. But it does state on their site that cities may adopt narrow restrictions, which our attorney has interpreted this as. And I quote from their site, "The First Amendment protects your right to assemble and express your views through protest. However, police and other government officials are allowed to play certain narrow restrictions on the exercise of speech rights." In this case, narrow is referring to the picketing of residential homes. "Our officers have the correct training, which includes constitutional law. I have confidence in our police chief to do this." "Mr. Mayor, currently, people may also not understand what level of privacy they have at their residence currently without this ordinance." "This ordinance gives direction to all people, which is healthy for a community." "That way, people understand their legal rights to privacy at their residency, as well as if they should choose to exercise their right to freedom of speech." "This is a logical planning piece for a community, which gives direction that guides people to understanding both of their rights better." "So, I am in favor of this." Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Dana.
Okay, thank you. I have a few comments. As as we've heard, this ordinance has been litigated in front of the US Supreme Court and similar ordinances in other courts, and it does not violate the First Amendment. Now, if we wanted to protect the First Amendment more than the Constitution demands, that is a policy decision that we could make. But just this weekend, we got an email from the National League of Cities saying that 73% of local city officials have reported experiencing harassment in the last year. Now, I have, I have not, but I know people who have. And one of the, one of the purposes of ordinances is to give people an idea of what behavior is appropriate. For instance, we, you can't park your car in your lawn. You need to move your, you need to move your political sign back 15 feet. You can't be excessively noisy in the middle of the night. You can't let your lawn grow more than six inches. Now, this, these are community values being reflected. And one of the reasons I'm in support of this ordinance is that I don't, I want people to know that targeted residential picketing, which would, I think, by any normal person be seen as harassment, is not appropriate in River Falls, and we won't tolerate it. I've also did a little bit of research. There are a number of states who have, already have statewide laws prohibiting residential picketing. Arizona, Colorado, Utah, North Carolina, Illinois, Missouri, and Virginia. And there are probably a few more that I missed. So, I see this as a step that I hope we never need, but I want it there in case something happens, particularly with the political environment the way it is, so, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment real quick, especially since I was called out, I guess, but I did bring this back. I felt that a broader definition of who it covered, being any resident, was important. The first, the first action we did not pass, and it was targeted only at elected officials, and that is probably too narrow. I worry about the baseball coach, the minister that has an opinion of something that you don't agree with. I think, I think a couple of people have, have mentioned other things. We haven't seen this in our community, and I hope we never do. And if we never do, then it's okay. Then the ordinance sits on the shelf, and we don't have to worry about using it. But if it does come up, I think, as Councilmember Odine said, this, this gives, gives a message to the community where they can protest and where they can have these demonstrations. I've not had any direct threats or harassment. I've indirectly had some in the years I've served on the council. And frankly, the one it impacted was my wife, and that bothered me more than me. I don't much care what people say or think about me in certain situations, but I care about my wife and my family. And that's, that's another piece of this that I don't want to see them impacted, or my neighbors, or the person down the street who coaches Little League. So, thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, first and second on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, next, move on to consent agenda. Acknowledgement of the following minutes. Got the Plan Commission from 6:4. We have the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 7:17. We have the Library Board from 6:3. Next one is a resolution approving the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Adjusted Urban Area Boundary. This resolution approves the adjusted urban boundary of the city for continued eligibility for grant funding. Next is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. Next one is a resolution designating De Sanctus Park as the official River Falls B City Park. And the last one is Resolution Authorizing Application for Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number six.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull number four.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Consent Agenda Items 3, A, 3, C, 5, and 7.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number, Mr. Morissette, you pulled number four.
Yeah, I apologize, staff. I should have asked this question earlier, and I don't know if, if City Engineer Nikleski, if you'd let him come up, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for him.
Yep.
My question is within regard to the boundary, I don't have a problem with it. I'm wondering how our boundary agreement with the Town of Kenny Canick plays into that because it looks like it just goes straight up to our city boundary.
The DOT did not take into account any, any agreements. And I, even if they were aware of them, they, they wouldn't. We frankly don't have very much input into this boundary. And I actually don't think that it would negatively impact the town at all, or us at all, regarding where the line ends up being. Predominantly, we're urban, they're rural. And this really just defines if roadways are eligible for US DOT urban funding or US DOT rural funding. There's two different major grant programs.
Okay, so if, if we decided, if we discovered that, I'll use Liberty Road north of M, needed, it just got redone, but if, if it, if it needed money, we would have to talk with the Town of Kenny about which pot of money we'd go to? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Well, it's not, that's not our road.
Right.
So.
But it's in our, it's in our attachment area.
It would be in our UAB, so if the town wanted to apply for funding utilizing the federal programs, they would apply for an STP urban grant instead of an STP rural grant.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I, I should have asked that question.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
It's kind of down in the weeds here a little bit. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We, oh, I'm sorry, is anybody else on that one?
Well, I don't know. Make a motion.
Resolution approving the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Adjusted Urban Area Boundary.
Second.
Any other questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and Mr. Downing, you pulled number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution designating De Sanctus Park as the official River Falls B City Park. I just want to provide a brief overview so people have some understanding of what I've been working on. And as the River Falls B City Committee Chair, I'd like to thank everyone who signed my petition to support a toxic free De Sanctus Park as work towards designing Sanctus Park as the official B City Park. This was work towards making this resolution happen. I got 278 signatures for that. Thank you for everyone who signed it. What we discovered in the review process is that this will be a non-toxic park at times.
What we discovered in the review process is that this will be a non-toxic park at times. However, site planning and invasive species are two exceptions for chemical use when needed. The staff have recommended an approach for best practices, which this plan follows. The Bee City Committee works with city staff to discover best practices for a city that are responsible and implementable. Part of it is creating an integrated pest management plan, which will be incorporated with this. Bee City USA was created to focus on pollinator habitat, with a focus on native bees and conserving native pollinator plants. The educational component of this is an ideal location, which will serve as an educational model to our community on how they can conserve pollinators. So, this is comprehensive work. It draws from the commitments in the resolution from the Bee City USA, which the city council unanimously passed in 2022. As the name suggests, the focus of Bee City USA is bees, the primarily or native species. The steps that affiliates take to conserve our native bees, including creating safe habitats and hosting community events, will also help other pollinators, including butterflies and moths, as well as non-native honeybee. I would like to thank our community partners on this project, Grow to Share, Kinnik-Nick River Land Trust, University of Wisconsin River Falls Bee Club, the St. Croix County Beekeepers, prairie enthusiasts, members of local garden groups, and members of River Falls Community Arts Base. Thank you. Special thanks to our city staff on the committee, Parker Clark and Amy Wyatt. Thank you very much. And a huge thank you to all of our Bee City Committee members for all your hard work on this. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move approval for the resolution designating De Sanctus Park as the official River Falls Bee City Park.
Second.
First and second. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a quick comment that I'd like to, I'd like to thank you, Sean, for all your work on Bee City issues. I think it's, it's been lovely to see, and I'm very happy about this, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Agreed. Okay, no other comments, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, move on to comptroller's report. So, Dean?
The comptroller's report for August 2024. General fund revenues through the end of August were $10,096,268, or 74% of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in August include $2,928,408 for property tax, $70,703 for payments in lieu of tax for the housing authority portion, and $16,640 for building permit fees. Expenditures through the end of August were $8,887,266, or 65% of total budgeted expenditures for the year. So, as of August 31st, 2024, net revenues over expenditures were $1,209,002.
Thanks, Diane. Okay, just got a couple of things here that I'd like to mention, some good news things. The City of River Falls was proud to join the St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity at a dedication ceremony last week. It was for the home for a new, it was the new home for a veteran. The city partnered with Habitat for Humanity to approve the lot to be rezoned as residential. This partnership helped us deliver on our mission to coordinate and deliver essential services, ensure, and ensure that a sustainable future is possible for residents in the City of River Falls. And the other thing was city clerks were busy last Tuesday for National Voter Registration Day. They visited UWRF and River Falls Library to help a total of 185 voters register for the upcoming election. Thanks to the clerks for their hard work to help our residents be ready to vote on November 5th, and they are doing a lot of work. It's greatly appreciated. Next, we're going to recess in the closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 19.851E for the following purposes: deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, to wit, possible purchase of 431 North Second Street. And I need a, I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Beerset?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Miller?
Yep.
Odean?
Yes.
Okay, I'm moving to closed session. Thanks.